Every one of them.
All times.
Absolutely.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I would like to call Monday's February 13th of 2023, school board meeting to order. Lisa, will you call and roll?
Director T. Felton.
Here.
Bierman.
Yes.
Weber.
Here.
W. Felton.
Yes.
Claflin.
Here.
Lala Burdi.
Here.
Rush.
Here.
At seven present at six o'clock.
All right, let's get things rolling now. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our first order of business. I'm asking for a motion to approve our meeting agenda for this evening as well as the Committee of the Whole from January 23rd, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 And motion carries. And we'll start this week as we do all of our school board meetings with our Quality in Action from the Student Services Department. Welcome.
Good evening. Hi, everyone. Thank you for having us. I'm Shawna Buck. I'm the Director of Student Services for South St. Paul, and I am joined this evening by two of my colleagues. This is Carol Ponco. She is a due process tosa that works in our district. And then Allison Jensen is a teacher at Lincoln Center. So they are going to talk to you today about secondary trauma, which I think is a very timely topic with some things that have been going around, going on lately. So I will step aside and let these ladies take over.
So good evening, and thank you for having us here. Alice and I had the opportunity a week ago on the Staff Development Day to present an extended version of this slide deck to a group of teachers across the district, elementary special education teachers, support staff, and some of our specialists as well. So it's a very needed conversation, and so thank you for letting us be here. Okay, maybe it's not working. Can you do it? Oh, okay. All right, we'll just go backwards. So some of the things we want to talk about is what is secondary trauma, what is rational detachment, the impact of secondary trauma both on individuals and on our organization, and something called the integrated experience. And so that is involving equipping staff with tools and strategies so they can support our students and we can support our teams, and then talk a little bit about crisis prevention intervention, which is one of our district's best practices for training our educators to respond to students with significant needs.
So Carol and I are the trainers for CPI's Nonviolent Crisis Intervention Program for the district, and we train special education staff and certain support staff, like school counselors and school support specialists. So before we get into sort of what we can do with secondary trauma and what that means, we just wanted to give an overlap view on what we're referring to when we talk about trauma. Trauma can be a personal response to an experience that a person believes to be a serious threat to their physical or emotional well-being. The three main types of trauma we talk about are acute, chronic, and complex. So acute trauma being something like you're in a bad car accident. Chronic trauma being something like an otherwise functioning and safe family but currently living through like what's happening in the Ukraine, for example. And complex trauma is really where we see the most exposure to secondary trauma in the school system. So complex trauma is often interpersonal, and it usually has varied multiple points. When kids experience trauma neurologically, it tends to affect them as a complex traumatic event, just because in addition to their own experiences, they're also viewing things through the lens of the adults around them. So even that car accident that perhaps led to like arguing between parents or increased stress in the household because of the medical bills or whatever it is, that child interpreting it to be a more complex experience just because of being a kid. And trauma is increasingly commonplace way back in 2018 before, well, before 2020. Thirty percent of children on average across socioeconomic groups, racial divides, gender, whatever groups you would want to disaggregate into, 30% of kids experienced one adverse childhood experience, and 14% of those experiencing two or more. Obviously, with the events surrounding COVID, those numbers likely increased, and those experiences can really change the makeup of your brain in childhood, leading to difficulties with self-regulation, emotional understanding, social skills, and with learning. These things actually, they've found to be generational. If there's enough exposure to traumatic experiences, people tend to pass it down genetically from one generation to the next. So even more generational trauma like poverty can really impact people, even if they're no longer personally experiencing that. So for what that means for people in caregiving professions like teachers is a lot of exposure to secondary trauma, which is your emotional reaction to not what's happening to you, but your experience in learning about what's happened to someone else. So whether it's learning about an experience a child has had by talking with them or by reading, special ed teachers read a lot of paperwork and write a lot of paperwork, so reading about it in that state as well, like being exposed to these tough experiences that some of our students have had. And it's become an increasing, a place where there's been an increasing amount of research. The emotional responses are something that I think we have all probably been aware of or feel kind of obvious, feeling guilty, feeling helpless, feeling angry or cynical about things. There's been an increase, the research around exposure to secondary trauma without integrating or processing it has led to increased number of sick days, reduced reduction in the immune system, and impact on people's sleep. And then in terms of professional impact, there's both an increase in compassion fatigue and burnout. And there's, in places where we're not, in places where people in caregiving professions aren't processing and managing their secondary trauma, there's higher turnover and reduced productivity, which means people who stay are exposed to more secondary trauma and are more likely to leave and have decreased productivity.
So with that, there's still hope, right? We still have the opportunity to show up and support our students, and there's been a real shift in pedagogy over the past few years with trauma-formed or trauma-aware practices away from like, what's wrong with that child? Why can't they behave? Why can't they pull it together? With kind of that quick get them out, remove them consequences, which actually further aggregates and complexes their experience from school to how do we support that child? What does that child need? How can we help them? And how can we help each other? How can we help our teams? And so that's pausing and using resources and strategies to support our students. And CPI, that Crisis Prevention Intervention Program, provides very concrete strategies for staff, and the whole program and the premise of the program is to support the care, welfare, safety, and security of our students and our staff, and to become really aware of those, what we call precipitating factors. What are the things that contribute to a student's behavior? We think of that iceberg analogy where what you see, and you don't always understand what's happening below, and really leaning in and getting to know your students. I think as our desired daily experience has been an emphasis in our district, that's through building relationships and really getting to know our students so that they can feel safe, and when a student feels safe, they can learn. And then the integrated experience. So that's the how, as the adult, what you do and how you respond can impact or escalate or de-escalate a student's experience in the classroom. So this is just a little graphic to remind us that progress isn't always a linear, you know, easily measurable thing, and sometimes with life experiences, there are ups and downs, but progress, and you know, we have to remember that the goal is to really get to know that kid and their life journey and their life story. And the second graphic here is about dysregulation signs, like we might see that outburst, and yes, there's things we can do to kind of quell it, provide support in the moment, but we're not really going to extinguish it if we don't really address the underlying factors, the contributing factors, such as hunger, poverty, anxiety, trauma that's going on in the child's life.
So the research around ACEs and childhood trauma is kind of depressing when you start, but there is a lot of hope, like Carol was saying, in the fact that children with those experiences, with that kind of neurological roadmap of trauma, can overcome that, can sort of build bridges across some of the damage that can happen typically through a network of supportive adults. We hear a lot about teachers, but teachers, therapists, neighbors, coaches, you know, whatever those, parents in some cases, whatever those adults might be, rather than it being an individual. So one thing we've been really focusing on with our special education teams in terms of their crisis intervention is making sure you are creating and fostering a team where people can be vulnerable with one another and reach out to support for each other and from each other as you navigate these really tough things, because that is not only going to take care of staff, but also is going to benefit the child, hopefully in the long run, in helping develop that network.
And I actually had the opportunity, ironically, as we were preparing this presentation for the team and then for this evening, I had some significant trauma happen last week with some students that I was working with, like really big crisis-level situations. And I will say that I was really fortunate and thankful that we have such a good supportive team. I had, I was covering a classroom. I had people come in and say, I'll take your class. Don't worry about it, checking in with me, including Dr. Zambrino checking in with me, making sure I was okay so that I could be okay for the students. So I really, really appreciated that support. It meant, it meant a lot. Some CPI tips, talking about rational detachment, and it's that kind of separation, as much as in the moment, you might be really reactive, kind of taking that moment to like, it's not about me, it's about the student. How can I really help? And not taking it personally and maintaining professionalism in that situation. And some practical tips are modeling for our students, right? Looking at if we as adults take that deep breath, then our students, when they're experiencing distress, are likely to use those strategies as well. How our words, our tone, our volume can really impact a situation, minimizing verbals when a student, we call it brain state awareness, so when the students, we call it lid flipping, when their rational thinking, focused part of their brain has gone, and they're in that fight-flight-freeze mode, we need to kind of help give that regulation strategy. So help give them some cues, concrete things first, then, when, then, limit choices so that a student can make rational adjustments and find some regulation. And then asking for help and knowing that it is okay to not be okay, and when we model that in our school and our culture, then I think our students know that, oh, so-and-so is having a hard time. We wish them well, and we know that they're going to get the help they need. So that every day is a fresh start, every hour is a fresh start, so that our students can be successful. Also, CPI gives a very structured framework around after there's been a big upset or a big crisis moment or something scary happens in the classroom, how do we regroup, reframe, and go forward? And so language around restorative conversations, coping models, so that we can kind of reflect either with the individual student or with the team, so we know what happened, who's been affected, how do we go forward so that this is either less likely to happen or that we get the support that the student or the team really needs?
So just a little history on how we've used crisis prevention training in South St. Paul. The program we teach is called Nonviolent Crisis Intervention, and it's provided by the Crisis Prevention Institute. That's a training that's used across lots of settings, hospitals, schools, corrections, all sorts of things. And the goal is to teach verbal de-escalation and preventative strategies in order to de-escalate situations as early into a crisis as possible, ideally before any crisis occurs. And then the tools that we teach allow people to feel confident and competent in keeping themselves and the people in their care safe should things escalate to a physical altercation. So we have, we're the two district trainers. The certification or recertification process happens every two years for about three days, so it's a pretty intensive training program. I've been a trainer in the district for seven years, and Carol recently was certified for the first time. I also had the opportunity to participate in the trauma informed additional module this year, which was an additional day of training on top of the recertification process, focused entirely on making sure that our processes and our training was trauma-informed and trauma-sensitive. Our special ed staff is trained annually, and then certain other staff are additionally trained. When we train someone for the first time, it takes about 10 hours over two days, and our refresher trainings are a little over a half a day. And we're working on adding these additional, more focused PD opportunities like this one throughout the year, because this material, when you cover it in the training itself, we have about 10 minutes for. So we were able to spend about an hour and a half, two hours, between an hour and a half and two hours on a week ago, talking through this stuff with staff, which I think was really, a lot of people really appreciated getting to dig a little deeper on it. So we moved to some online stuff during COVID that we've still offered parts of to people as a way to kind of revisit some of those things, and now we're working on really focusing more of our energy on the verbal de-escalation of preventative strategies rather than focusing as much on the physical aspects. And our goals going forward are to create additional strategies and supports to ensure that we're limiting restrictive procedures to an absolute last resort. Ideally, we would have zero. And then creating more crisis plans and crisis teams when we know a student is needing additional support, really targeting their individual needs to ensure that we're providing them with what they need for success, familiar staff that feel prepared to handle their needs in a sensitive and discreet way. And then providing more opportunities like this one to staff so they can continue to think more about the their own supports, but also how to continue to improve their practice around these things going forward.
Oops. And I just wanted to share, well, we'll get a little ahead, share some of the comments that came out of the training that we did last week. And again, there were some non-special ed staff that participated at that training, and I think there was just a realization and an awareness that trauma does affect everyone, that there's a need for this kind of training to help us be regulated as adults so that we can offer that support to our students. They, there's a strong urgency to maybe have more people get more training and more supports in our schools and our systems. And then how do we really help each other to have that proactive, heart-centered approach when we're really, really dealing with some challenging situations for our students? So, and then we just wanted to kind of remind you that it is not just about the students who need the tools, it's the staff who need the tools so that all can thrive and all can have that really desired daily experience that's positive and safe and feeling really focused and able to learn, and that, that's complex. It's a complex process. It involves lots of supports and lots of systems in place. And then we just really want to thank you for offering us the time to share and for supporting all the training that does happen across the district and investing in our staff.
I think for both of us, this is something we're really passionate about. We wanted to share some of our additional learning we did on this, on top of the professional development we spoke of earlier. So on the slides, if you click this link, opens a bunch of articles if you'd like to do some further reading. The three articles we highlighted on the top are the articles that staff read last Monday, and then additional ones that we read in preparation for last week's Time with Staff and for our continued work with staff on this.
Do you have any questions for us?
Is the, is that link in the?
I was gonna say, we'll make sure to get you all the links so you can get in there and take a look at the resources.
I think that's such critical work that you're doing right now. As a fellow educator, I think the pandemic, when returning with students, I suddenly became so keenly aware of secondary trauma in a way that I had not been aware before, and I think we are all going through it in one way or another, and the fact that you are there to kind of support all of us is really critical and really special, and I just, I have a lot of gratitude for you working through that. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you so much for, for your staff training. That is wonderful, wonderful thing to do. Thank you so much.
As you said, it's hard, but it sounds like fascinating work and being able to give people the vocabulary to identify what they're feeling. I'm sure it creates lightbulb moments like all over the place. I know in doing my, my student teaching many moons ago, like if I had had access to some of this knowledge, I think my first half of my student teaching would have gone a lot better if I had known some of these things. So thank you so much for all that you're doing.
Yeah, we're very lucky to have in-house trainers. So, you know, a lot of times people have to invest in that, train the trainer, and so I do want to thank you for taking that on for the district because it is really important work, and it helps our staff make good decisions because we, you know, when we're dealing with all, you know, adults are dealing with a lot too, so to have them preemptively, we, our goal is really be as proactive so that we don't get into reactive spaces and have things not go well. So this is the CPI, you know, we always use our acronyms and things, but CPI is something that's really an important part of that proactive work, so.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Next up for the report section in our meeting tonight is, we had a public listening session tonight. We did not have anyone come. We had a couple board members here, but should you ever have any questions or concerns or comments you would like to bring forth to the board? Those meetings are the first school board meeting of each month at 4:15 right here in City Hall, or you can also make those comments via the website. Next up, we have our Committee of the Whole report. Prior to every board meeting, we have our Committee of the Whole meeting, in which the board does much of the business and the work of the board. Vice Chair Weber, will you provide kind of an update of?
Absolutely. So one of the first things that we did was we talked about, or we had a presentation from our American Indian Advisory Council or Committee, talking about the different ways that the school district serves the needs of our American Indian students and their families, and had an interesting discussion about, you know, the, the different, you know, ways that we serve people in that community. We then moved on to the various committee reports for things like District 917, serving on the local issues board, the scholarship committee. The scholarship applications are due tomorrow. So if any parents are watching of seniors who have not turned in their scholarship applications, it's due tomorrow, and talked about, and talked about that. We also briefly mentioned some of the legislative bills that are going through right now that would directly impact our district pertaining to school lunch fees, general education funding, changes potentially to how compensatory aid is calculated, and some variety of other employment issues that would relate to the district as an employer. And then we had a discussion about some of the long-range planning for the buildings that the school district owns. And as anyone who has lived in a house for multiple years, things need to be fixed. You plan, do you remodel something? Do you live with something? And so we're just taking a, a long look at all of our different facilities and where we put all the people. And so that was the conclusion to our Committee of the Whole meeting.
All right. A lot discussed. Superintendent Dr. Zambrino, will you provide us some highlights from around the district?
Absolutely. And a lot this time because we had, normally our, our rhythm or cadence is a meeting every other week, and this last month, we had some extra days in the calendar, so it's been three weeks, but as we are in February, there's a lot to, not to celebrate and to be thankful for. So the first on the list is that February is Minnesota, it's, sorry, the Minnesota School Board Association has designated February as School Board Recognition Month. So I know that this is a board that probably doesn't like a lot of extra attention, but it is time for us to do that for you. I think I've learned so much in the last year, we were talking before the meeting, that I'm almost a year in, and it's been great working with the board that hired me and then this new board, but it's a month where we can have an opportunity to share the important work that a school board does. So we'll be kicking out information on social media and other, other spaces just to share about our current board and past boards and the important work you do. And of course, one of our goals is to keep interest in that because it is something that comes up every couple of years where there's seats, and we want to continue the high engagement we see from our community. But a big thank you to you all for your work and commitment to the school district. February is also Black History Month, and so we're doing a number of things to celebrate Black History Month. What you see here is a picture from the school, but the purpose of the month is really to highlight and focus attention on the contributions of African-Americans to the United States. And so we have displays and events throughout the district to elevate that and share some of that so our students can engage in that. And actually, I think most folks know we have our Black Pride Organization, which is a really strong student affinity group, and I was with them today. They were helping out with African-American Parent Involvement Day, which I'll talk about in a moment, but they're also going to be going out to the elementary schools, and as part of the reading month that's going on, there's like, I don't know how many months going on in the month of February, but they're going to be going out as part of that to read some works from famous black Americans to our elementary kids. And that's also one of just the highlights. Anytime we get our, our high schoolers into the elementary schools, you just see the kids light up to think about where they're going and having those positive role models in their life. And as I mentioned, it is actually today National African-American Parent Involvement Day, so there was a number of great events going on and amazing turnout. It's fun to feel the effects of COVID kind of going away where we can get people back into the building. So this is a picture from what was going on at Lincoln Center this morning, had a chance to meet with these families. One of them knew to the, to the city and to the district is sharing what a positive experience it's been being part of South St. Paul. But the, the emphasis on National African-American Parent Involvement Day is, of course, to engage those parents in the student's learning, but we also want to make sure everyone's included. And so it was, I mean, probably a couple hundred people that I saw this morning at Lincoln and probably about the same over at Capoja, so they had a chance to come in and read and share some treats in the morning and then get to follow their kids throughout the day. And then the secondary did some of the same thing, and our BPO students were in the stock exchange and had some displays and some of the great work they're doing. There's also an event going on as we speak at the secondary as well. So I haven't figured out how to be in two places at once, but once I do, I'll, I'll be in both. Always is great to highlight the amazing work of our staff. We had a Quality in Action presentation, hearing presentation, hearing about the contributions of some of our staff and student services. But also want to highlight that Bob Peter Fessso, our seventh grade science teacher, is one of the candidates for Minnesota Teacher of the Year. I've had a chance to be in his classroom a couple of times. I think a lot of folks know my wife as a middle school science teacher, so it's a classroom setting that's kind of near and dear to my heart. But every time you're in his room, I mean, the level of thinking that he has going on and the questioning and discussions that go on are amazing. And I did send him a message and said, you know, whatever the outcome is, South St. Paul can be really proud of Mr. Peter Fessso and the work that's going on in his classroom. Oh, yes. Fighting for tax equalization. So great opportunity. Senator Klein extended an opportunity for myself and Brady Hoffman pictured here with Senator Klein to go to the Senate Education Finance Committee and advocate for a bill that he introduced. It's called Senate File 100, and it's specific to South St. Paul, looking for equalization. I'll try to think of that in the simplest term. We passed our referendum, super appreciative of our taxpayers for that support. But now because our community is largely homeowners and doesn't have a high property tax value, that burden to pay that tax is largely on our homeowners. And then you look at neighbors, we are great partners in the tri-district with West St. Paul. But if you look at them, they have a much larger commercial corridor, so the homeowners pay a much smaller portion. So we looked at what it costs, $3 to their taxpayers costs $11 to ours. And so Senator Klein has heard the message loud and clearly. I did not mince words in my testifying about the importance of this for our community, and I'll continue to fight for that. I think we have as good a chance as ever. I know it's been a conversation for years here in South St. Paul, and rightfully so. But it seems that the legislators are really getting the message. And it's not a partisan issue. It really is just an issue of fairness and property tax relief. And so it was a great opportunity. And I'll be back on March 8. There's a day at the Capitol at AMSD. We belong to Association of Metropolitan School Districts, and they've invited us to come down and spend the day there. And I'll continue to advocate for what's right for South St. Paul. Mentioned this last couple of meetings, but we're almost there. So we are doing our first joint job fair with the city, between the city and the school district, this Wednesday from 3:00 to 7:00 at the secondary building. It's an opportunity for people to come in. They can apply and interview on the spot. We know that there's some high need job areas and excited to see who comes. We put together a little video that we'll show here to just promote what it's like to be an employee in the greatest district in Minnesota, maybe broader than that. Hopefully this all worked.
Can I interject a small comment?
Let the video play first.
He was mentioning that four-page, four-color flyer that went out in the, that was really a great piece.
Great. Thank you.
I decided to come to South St. Paul when my kids started preschool. I had been teaching preschool in
Try to see if there's any way to get it up a little louder.
And commuting every day. Just really wanted to be a part of like their school family.
Came for these students, for the kids, and to see if I can make some kind of change, some kind of impact.
I first decided to apply for South St. Paul. It was a better opportunity for my family, so.
My position with South St. Paul Schools is a head engineer. And in that position, I do a variety of different jobs, which I love. Every day is a new experience, and it just keeps me thriving.
One of the things that's special about our district is our size. We're really small, and so you can develop close relationships with other staff, but also our families and our community. And so it just, it really feels like a family.
I get to interact with elementary kids, students, and, you know, the middle school kids here too. And you just see them, you know, growing. And you start to build those relationships with parents. And you just pretty much get to know the whole family.
Once you're getting to know people, right, you find out that they graduated from here, their mom works here, they're cousins with the bus driver. That's something that's unique to South St. Paul. And it makes our relationships stronger.
I love working with the staff and the kids. As I grow older, the kids mean so much to me.
We have a really great benefits package. So first, we aim to have competitive salary and pay hourly rates for our employees. Anyone who's full-time, which is actually considered 30 hours or more, qualifies for medical insurance. One of the things that's unique about working in the public sector that a lot of people don't understand when they're looking at total compensation is that we actually earn a pension. We also really work closely with people to provide flexible options around schedule. So we have opportunities that are in the day, opportunities in the evening. Of course, if you're a parent or you live in the community, it's great to have a schedule that might mirror what your own children are.
I'm a single mom. It's awesome to be able to go with my kids to school, to be on the same schedule, to know all of their friends, to know some of their teachers. It makes it a lot easier for me to balance both.
I love the schedule here because every day I start in the morning fairly early, not too early, and I get done. I've been off my day by 12 o'clock, and I'm ready to roll. I have so much time to spend the rest of the day with my family. When people think of schools, they always go right to their brain of thinking about teachers. But there are many different types of jobs within the district, and they don't all require a teaching license. Everything is just as impactful. There are so many moving parts and people that work together.
As I was growing up, I always wanted to be a school teacher. I never knew I would be a head engineer of a building.
There are many opportunities, whether it's working in our offices or being a support staff member in the classroom, like a paraprofessional. We don't want people to think the jobs are limited because they don't have prior school-based experience or a teacher's license. And we're also looking for opportunities to help people get trained when they're with us.
I have a psychology background, so I want to work, I want to do counseling at some point, just see if working with kids is something that I'd like to do.
We do a good job as a district of making sure that every employee feels valued in their role.
The leadership in South St. Paul, they listen to their employees, and they do the best they can to give them what they need to succeed.
Being able to go outside and see the sun and not sit behind a desk, it's so comforting to know that there's a job out there that works for me.
I like to work with the kids and have a big impact on their life. I like seeing them smile, and I like just knowing that I'm making their day better in my life.
This role, cultural liaison, you know, brand new to this role, is such an impactful role to a kid's life and a kid's future. I'm pretty happy, you know, being a part of the community and supporting them too. So I think that's, it's an honor to be doing that kind of work.
I am a graduate of South St. Paul, and I live in the community. And so for me, it's really about reinvesting in this community and being able to build those connections with students and families and the place where I live, where my kids live.
I love working in South St. Paul. I've worked in multiple different school districts, and this is a special place. It's a great feeling community. It's a great feeling district, and everybody really has a lot of fun while we do our job.
I perfected my SpongeBob voice.
If you want to join us and be part of the fun and part of the work and making a big difference for kids, this is a great place to be.
Oh, that's incredible.
Well done.
That's great.
Nice. Well done.
It's amazing work our team did. As usual, all created in-house. So I was proud of our team for the work they do, and of course, our staff. And, you know, I think we're all about to tear up watching those kids in there and things like that. So hopefully people, you know, I'm sorry, the sound maybe wasn't perfect at the beginning. If someone's watching from home or streaming later, we'll have the link, we'll share that out so people can see that video. It's to promote our job fair, but it's also something I think that just speaks to what is so great about being in a district like we have here. So. All right. So next on my list, some highlights around things going on. We have been highlighting in some of our communications the work of our counselors. Last week was School Counselor Week. This is our secondary counseling team. And I'll tell you, these folks are leaning in. It's fun to interact with them. We have a number of new counselors in the district this year. And I walked through that office quite a bit for, it kind of connects through the main office to the rest of the building. So you walk by them a lot. And they're just leaning in on things like, you know, helping make sure kids are getting their credits and preparing them for college and career options. And they just have all kinds of ideas. They're just blossoming with that. But we obviously know, coming off of the pandemic, students now more than ever really need that academic and emotional support. So I just want to give a shout out to our counselors for the work they do. Our last meeting was the very beginning of our Paraprofessional Appreciation Week, and that was January 23rd to 27th. We did make a big point of honoring our paraprofessionals and the work they do in all the schools. So just want to circle back and thank them and share some pictures. This is the, I think they call it the Para Parade. I got to watch them going through the halls, and the kids are so excited, give them a high five and thank them for what they do. So, and that kind of thing was going on all throughout the district. So again, just a big thank you to them for the work they do. If anyone visits my office, you'll see a new decoration hanging in there. We had a student craft sale at Central Square last week, I think Friday. And so went over there to buy some things and the handiwork, the work they did was just great. And so handmade crafts. And what I ended up getting was, it's like a wire that's shaped in a heart, and then they tied yarn around it in our Packers color. So that's hanging on my whiteboard now in my office. I always love anything in my office that just regrounds me on our kids. So it's fun, fun to see them, and their goal is to work on raising money for field trips. So they weren't sure where they wanted to go. I don't know that they thought they were going to make any money. I heard they banked, I'm looking over here at our team that presented from Suze's, 400 bucks. So that
They're on their way.
Yeah, right? Love it. So really cool. One of the goals we've been talking a lot on my leadership team with our cabinet members and our principals in the buildings is how do we do, you know, increase our engagement with families. And so we're just trying a bunch of new things. This year, we did a De Los Muertos event. Principal Borg's doing some engagement by themes with families. And so something that was tried at the secondary building was an EL Family Night. So again, I know we use a lot of acronyms, but in the profession here, that's English learner. So engaging our English learner families who then are, a lot of them newer to the country, so may not know all the ins and outs of our system. And so working with them to understand how grading works and credits and the graduation process, getting them connected to community resources and student safety. And so that was our first time doing that. You can see in the picture, we had good attendance. But we're excited to continue to build these as annual or ongoing work to engage our families and knowing that not all families have that access. It's a kind of given in my home, like this is what you do, this is when you apply. And for families who are new to country, and I was an EL teacher, so it's near and dear to my heart as well as the special that I taught. So I appreciate the work we're doing to support those learners and their families. Always fun to bring in some of the hands-on stuff going on at the CLC. So our students at the CLC were learning about anatomy, and so working to make skeletons or parts of bones as lifelike as possible. So kind of going hands-on. And then they were, they had a model that they were working off of. And if it fit perfectly, then they could get some extra bonuses. So great to see them in that hands-on learning and really understanding physiology and anatomy through that kind of learning. And similarly, in hands-on learning, our Lincoln students had the opportunity to learn about forces and motion. So you can see here, I'm glad I'm not on the receiving end of whatever they've got loaded in that slingshot there, but looks like they're ready to launch. But learning some concepts around physics with some interactive science assembly, they learned about Sir Isaac Newton and theory of gravity and three laws of motion. So I think there's some kinetic energy, if I'm right on that picture. So ready to go. So fun to see the hands-on learning, always gets the kids excited. I had a first in between our last meeting and this meeting. I was knighted along with some of our other staff. You've seen the picture here with the, the Winter Carnival royalty came to Capoja. So they had come before, and then they waited to see who actually was selected as royalty. So they came in, and the Vulcans came, and then the royalty, and gave the big rah-rah for the kids. And they just had so much fun cheering for, you know, they had a lot of debate about whether winter's a good season or not. So the Vulcans were trying to sway them. They were having a little bit of pull. But then once we got into the knighting, I think the kids came around to winter's okay in the end. So luckily, no one pitched me to call a snow day or anything like that while I was there. But as always, you can follow us on social media. We try to keep up to date with all the different platforms and sharing great things going on. And always, again, want to make sure people are aware of some important dates. So talked about our job fair on the 15th at the secondary building from 3:00 to 7:00. On the 20th, there's no school for President's Day, so make sure that we keep that in mind and don't send the kids in that day. Of course, we'll have staff on hand if something like that ever happens. It does sometimes. But make sure our families are aware of that. March 9th is the scheduled Flex Learning Day for pre-K through 8. That was something we added to our calendar the last time around. And then that sets us up for March 10th and 13th with some staff development, professional learning, so no school on those days. I can't believe I'm already talking about spring break. March 27th to 31st is not far away. So the year is flying by, but lots of great things going on. And talked about this being a month to show appreciation to our board. And I want to reiterate our appreciation of the work you do. And if folks are interested in learning more about what you all do, it's always on our, on our website. Just click on our district and school board, and you can see all the materials and review past meetings if you're interested. So, thank you.
Excellent. Lots going on.
Yeah, lots.
And Sir Zambrino, apparently, that's what it'll be for now.
Somebody asked me, is it Doctor Superintendent? So I said, no, it's Sir Doctor Superintendent Zambrino. Yeah, right, no.
That's a lot of titles. But I also want to commend you for the testifying for our community. Got to watch that one. And fingers crossed, I'm really hoping that delivers for our community. All right. Moving on, we, to our consent items. The consent agenda items are typically financial claims, staffing, personnel, and nature. Don't require much for public discussion or explanation prior to board action. These items have been presented in the board packet and have already been discussed or explained and do not require much for further explanation. But do I have a motion for the approval of our consent items?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And motion carries. Moving on to policy review. We do not have any policy review items at this time. Many to come, come spring, as the policy committee is ramping up, to take a look at a few things. Then, let's move on to our business items. I am looking for a motion to approve the South St. Paul School Board, to approve the acceptance of gifts.
So moved.
Second.
And discussion. Dr. Zambrino? Nope.
Want me to read the resolution?
Yes, if you could read the resolution, Lisa, thank you.
Be it resolved that the School Board of South St. Paul Public Schools, Special School District Number Six, accept the following donations as indicated in the detailed background listed below. A $500 donation to our Nutrition Services Department from Scott and Delissa Johnson, and that is to pay off student lunch debt. There's also another $500 donation to Capoja Education Center from the Croatian Hall, and that money will be earmarked for educational foundation scholarship for our seniors.
Outstanding. All right. And that is a resolution. So Lisa, can I have you call the rule?
Director Bierman?
It's moving?
Yes. Say yes.
We're voting on the acceptance of gifts resolution.
Aye.
Weber?
Yes.
W Felton?
Yes.
Claflin?
Yes.
Lala Burdi?
Yes.
T Felton?
Yes.
And Cher Rash?
Yes.
That's seven yeas.
And the motion carries.
Big thank you in there.
Huge thank you. Overwhelmingly, constantly impressed with the support for our district and want to thank everyone in the community for that ongoing support. And next up, I am looking for a motion for the approval of the South St. Paul School Board to extend Director Felton's term for Intermediate School District 917 School Board from June 30th, 2023, to December 31st, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I can just jump in there, little context. So 917 had their, their calendar was a little misaligned with how school board calendars were aligned. So they just made a shift. So it extended it out about that six months just to get it aligned with other elections that are going on in school boards.
And it really makes it sort of easy for us to kind of work fluidly together. So.
Right.
All of those fit in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And our last business item for the night, I am looking for a motion to approve for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the 2022-23 Student/Teacher Agreement between South St. Paul Public Schools and the University of Minnesota.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Miltier.
Joel is ready for me. Sorry. I had all my papers in front of me.
No worries. Just bringing forward yet another student/teacher agreement, which is a great thing for South St. Paul. We want to encourage our student teachers to come here and work for us. It's a great pipeline to hopefully careers for them here in our district. So this is one with the University of Minnesota, their College of Education and Human Development. So if the board is approving that tonight, put that forward. And we do have one current staff member who is currently looking to extend his license or get a new license through the University of Minnesota.
Excellent. I like that we have lots of these kind of coming before us. Two in a row. So, any other discussion? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. All right. And we will be moving on to our board member reports. Here, our board members are going to provide brief report from some of their maybe committee work or events that they have participated or where they have seen a passion. I'm going to start with Director Claflin.
Thank you. Over the past month, I joined the local issues meeting where we had a lot of discussions about things that are happening in South St. Paul. I brought a few issues to that group as well. We talked about the declining enrollment trends, just with the declining birth rates and how that's going to be a challenge for us in the district and something for all of us to be aware of as we're planning our, our future, how we're planning our buildings, our budgets. And folks are looking at employment way out into the future as our students are graduating. I also saw a passion, a lively passion over at Capoja. I got to visit the Lego League Explorers. This is a group of second and third graders who were coached by Coaches Gorman and Sherhart. And they used Lego to learn about energy and build a community around lots of different energy sources and use some engineering thinking and a lot of creativity in this process. And the students were very proud of the things that they created and they were especially proud of building a wind turbine that made dolphin noises. So there was definitely a passion there. That was great to see some excitement and great use of Lego.
Excellent. Director Lollabirdie?
I would just like to extend sympathy to the Jodel Ista family. Jodel has been very active in our school district over the years. She was a restorative justice peace guide at Capoja for a number of years. She was very instrumental in creating and maintaining the restorative justice program that went on for years here. She served on the city council. She was just involved in many things. A really truly lovely, kind woman who will be greatly missed. So I would like to extend sympathy to her family tonight.
Thank you. Director Weber?
I would encourage everyone to come to the job fair this week. I think it's a great experience with our district that our city and our school district are one and the same and so that we can hold these kind of cross-promotional events to work. I know the city has lots of jobs and the school district does and maybe even do one of each depending on your schedule and availability. And then on a serious note, I want to extend my condolences to everyone in the Harding High School family and also in the St. Paul Public Schools for the recent events that have happened there. You know, some very tragic things have happened and as we learned about, you know, secondary trauma earlier today, just want to extend our deepest condolences to that, to that school district and their families.
All right. Director Tim Felton?
I think this Saturday is the Shoke Choir Sweethearts Dinner, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
So that's, I'm looking forward to that, taking my sweetheart. And then girls hockey team section semifinal tomorrow night. Encourage everybody to attend.
Excellent. Director Wendy Felton?
Hi, I just want to extend to our community some of the fun events that are coming up for our students in our buildings. First of all, from our educational foundation, just a reminder to all seniors that their scholarship applications are due tomorrow to be turned in to the educational foundation as our scholarship banquet will be held on May 10th. So make sure kids that you get that in as they will be, they have scholarships approximately $447,000 that we can give out to our students this year in the Secondary Building. And also, we've already got our gala date planned for coming up for the foundation, which will be on November 16th. Granted, it's quite a long ways away, but kind of keep it, keep it in mind, November 16th, which will be held again at South U Country Club. And a couple other little fundraisers that are coming up. Lincoln Center is going to be having a fundraiser for their group next Tuesday, the 23rd, at the Qdoba Mexican Restaurant in West St. Paul on Robert Street, kind of right across from Target there, from between four and eight PM. You can have a copy of the flyer or a QR code that you can show to them that 25% of sales will be donated to Lincoln Center next week, Tuesday, the 23rd. Couple other fun events for our middle school students. Our eighth graders are getting a field trip a week from Friday on the 24th to the Buckhill Ski Area. That should be a lot of fun for them kids. Wish them safe, eighth graders, week from Friday. And also the middle schoolers are getting a dance this coming Friday, the 17th, from six to eight PM at the Secondary Building, middle school dancing. That'll be fun for them. And as Mr. Felton had also mentioned about the Shoke Choir Sweethearts Dinner, which is this Saturday, which will be starting at five o'clock. Unfortunately, I can't attend it this, this year, but I have attended it several times. It is a wonderful evening, wonderful music, entertainment. It is really, really a great opportunity. If you'd like to purchase tickets, contact Jolene Mashak at the Secondary Building and you can give her the payment to pay for your dinner. So it's really a great evening. And the last thing that I have is from Capoja. The Capoja PTA will be having an online auction coming up in March. So if there are any community members that would be willing to donate, say a gift basket, gift cards, something that, that would work for the community, they're accepting donations through, through the 24th of February. So that would be at Capoja PTA. If you have questions, you know, give the school a call and they can connect you to the PTA members, so. It's just a lot of fun things coming up for students that our community can attend, so thank you.
Thank you. Director Bernie Bierman?
I just want to, one comment. You must be referring to on that fundraiser, that 25%, that one they mentioned? It would either have to be Friday to February 23rd because Tuesday, of course, would be February 20th.
Oh, I'm sorry if I wrote the wrong date.
Well, I mean, more likely it's Friday the 23rd. And let's hope so because it'd be a lot better revenue on Friday.
Oh, thank you, Bernie.
I just say.
And I'll see if I can correct the date. Thank you very much.
I'd rather not stand there in line for three days.
No, no.
And then I would like to mention, if I could, anybody who has a link to any businesses in the South St. Paul area, and especially in South St. Paul itself, either through friendship or having a family member work there or having work there, that would be a possible opportunity for some of these junior, senior programs of exposing, like we've also got a plan that's with the truck dealer down there on Concord, et cetera. And word of mouth might bring in some additional opportunities and I'd like to see, I think a lot of people would like to see more of that where there's opportunity for students, the juniors, seniors especially, to be close to home and still be involved in these programs.
All right. Thank you, Director Bierman. I mean, I think the rest of my board members have sort of taken my items away from me already, so I'd encourage you to be at the job fair. I've been cheering on Shoke Choir all season long, so Sweethearts is a great evening as well. Tonight, we
It's Tuesday, the 23rd.
All right. Tonight, I am looking for a motion to move us into a closed session per open meeting law for board orientation around negotiations and discussion for the parameters for clerical negotiations. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is this one question? The motion does something that affects tonight?
Yes.
Yes. That is to put us into a closed session to discuss the parameters of clerical negotiations.
Closed session, so I got you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that'll move us into a closed session. If we can clear the room and we'll give it a couple moments and